I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder to everybody to silence their cell phones. And then we will get into the reorganization of the board. There's supposed to be an actual thing that I'm supposed to say, which is on my other thing, so hopefully my phone makes it. Because my computer works. Are there any nominations for the CY twenty-two board chair?
I nominate Sarah Nagel.
I second that.
Are there, I have to say it three times. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, then, no responses. You made, Brian made a motion, Cass seconded. And if there aren't, it says if there are no other nominations, then that person takes the chair and there is no vote?
I didn't know that.
Do we, will you do that even, because we have to have roll call vote?
It says, no vote. So as long as there weren't two. Okay, at this point, we would go to the vice chair, and I would like to make a motion to nominate Becky Bennett for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Congratulations, Becky.
Thank you.
That's Sarah.
You ran a good campaign.
Yeah. At this point, I would take any motions or nominations for CY twenty-two board clerk.
I'll nominate Steve Olen.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Congratulations, Steve. Anybody want to nominate somebody for CY twenty-two treasurer? I would nominate Brian.
And I will second it.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Is that two or three? I got confused. Are there any other nominations? Just be safe. Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay. I texted everybody yesterday that if I was board chair, I had a new idea. And I did talk to MSBA about it on Friday, FYI. They said, give us weeks to get back to you because they're running nineteen superintendent searches right now across the state, and they're busy. So she kind of wanted to poo-poo me. Anyway, so I did check this and it's fine. So the next would be the committee memberships. So with everybody's approval, I would like to make activities. Randy Posner and I. Budget, Becky Bennett, Brian Grimsley, and Randy. Curriculum, Steve and Becky. Facilities, Brian and Cass. Personnel, myself, Steve, and Cass. And policy, the whole board. So we'd all get emailed the policy. We, at the meeting, present like the first reading, the things that are changing. And that way, and if it's one that we have to create ourselves, the whole board would then be able to have input on what it is. What's my theory there? So does that need to vote? No. That's, yes, I would like to make a motion that all, for all of those committee placements, please.
I'll second. Oh, if you want to.
Yeah, you're good, you're good.
Any comments? That looks like a regular vote. Okay, then.
Uh, Sarah, this is Becky. I just wanted to say that later in our board packet, we had a list that we had a history of who was on what committee.
Yep.
And so we should just update that in the future. So we include twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Agreed.
We don't need to have this, isn't, just it would be nice to use it for future reference.
Yep, I agree.
Have you guys noticed that we didn't have twenty twenty-one on that list?
I did not notice that.
It did not.
Okay. Then let's do a roll call vote to accept them. Becky?
Aye.
Cass? Aye.
All right.
Aye, aye.
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 Okay, some passes.
Can I get some clarification?
Yes.
So can you just clarify who the chair is and the chair stays the same?
Uh, the chair would be me for personnel, Becky for budget, Steve for curriculum, Brian for facilities, Randy for activities, and
you for policy.
Well.
It'd have to be you for policy.
It'd have to be.
So the chairs all stay the same?
Chairs stay the same, we just add it to different, but it'd still be.
Okay, so the chairs all remain the same?
Yes.
And then for the committee, for the policy, there isn't a committee meeting?
No, we present.
Everybody gets sent the policies. It's up to everybody to read the policies. And then when we get to the board meeting, then, is it up to me then to update at the meeting, or is it? How do we want to handle that? Just, you know how we usually have somebody read the policy?
Yep.
Do you want me to do that, to kind of give an update then? Or just kind of, is that how we want to do it?
I think so.
Okay.
Because most of them are changeover.
Pretty, yeah, it's not a big deal. I just kind of wanted to know how.
I know less Cass would like to.
Doesn't matter.
Between the two of you, I think you can sum it up.
And Mr. Malmberg, are you okay with that?
Does that?
Well, no, I think between.
That's something, yeah.
Yeah, between maybe just Cassie and I, we can just do that. Yeah, that's probably not a big deal, just, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay.
And then actually, Sarah, before we move to the next agency representatives.
Yep.
I just didn't want to get too far down. But I wanted to bring up about all of these nominations for these positions, officers in particular. I was thinking that as a board, it might be good for us to not keep anybody more than two years in a spot, just so people can rotate and have different duties, different experience, and learn more about the other duties of the other officers in the board. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and if anybody else had any input or ideas about that, or what they thought.
I, to be honest, I'm not sure how the board will look next year. So it very well may happen just based on changeover.
Right, and obviously this wouldn't be a policy. And it might happen with changeover, but sometimes in the past, it's been the same person or people for multiple years, that it might be a good idea to not get stuck in that.
I sort of like that idea as well. Not that it's an official policy, but.
No, but it's something we can revisit here come November.
And in all honesty, that comes, that's why it comes up every year. You're all welcome to re-dominate somebody different every year. So that can change every year, I agree.
Right.
So. All right, anything else?
Just saying, I wanted to throw out there for people to think about.
Yep. Um, agency representatives, Minnesota State High School League. That is traditionally the activities committee, and I believe it should stay the same, so Randy and I. MSBA appears to be me. Community and Advisory Board is the activities committee. The Paul Bunyan Education Joint Powers is the board chair and the vice chair. So Becky and I. The Health and Wellness Committee, does anybody have an interest in that? Don't everybody jump at once.
I'm not sure what that even is. I mean, I know what health and wellness is, but I don't know what that particular thing is.
Um, I've been on it in the past, I believe Becky has, I don't know if you were last year.
I maybe was last year, I don't know.
Um, I, to be honest, I think it's kind of fallen by the wayside. To my knowledge, there hasn't been a lot of meetings or something.
Sometimes your policy, you have to have, if ever you have, like a few years ago, we had to have a policy meeting when like the vending machines changed and you had to have some input on different things, sometimes that committee meets.
Well, and I know in the past, different insurance benefits came if you had meetings and ran. Like right now, you'd be running some New Year's resolution type thing, and you get extra money for the school or something, so.
They don't meet often, it's not a whole lot, sometimes they have them, but we haven't, I don't know. We haven't had much lately. Sue used to do it.
I was gonna say, I think Sue Van Hall took over.
And then we had a couple other teachers take it over, and I don't know if they've met much lately, so.
You can put me down, Sarah.
Cass, thank you. Put Cass on that. District Leadership Team, Curriculum Committee, all right with being on that, so that would be Steve and Becky.
That's good for me.
Yeah, Becky?
Sure.
Okay.
It's hard for her to make it because of the timing of it.
Yeah, it might be during the day, but we'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
And the Title I, LEA Title I Administrative Representative is Josh Smith. Can I get a motion to accept those representatives, please?
Repeat that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in, sorry, Becky? Roll call vote?
Um, I have one more thing to discuss about that. Thinking about these representatives for agencies, where does that Sourcewell fall in for that, one that you're on? Is that?
That is a voted position for four years. It's not an appointed thing. I run for it every four years.
Yeah, it's an elected position through Sourcewell.
Oh, so it's just, uh, some school board members.
It's not through, it's not through our school, nope.
Different school board members run for that?
Yep.
Yep, it's not through.
Or city and council, city mayors, different. Yep.
So it doesn't have one from each school board on their board?
Nope, nope, anybody can run for it.
Nope.
Oh, okay.
It's a, it's a regional thing, there's from one from so many, like this year, two board members are up. Uh, and we find out in February who is, because do we have not, uh, ballots? We should have ballots, or maybe it's not our region that's voting this time.
I don't think it's our region that's up, yeah. Yeah, so it's not through our school.
How much is your term up, Sarah? Just curious.
Next year, it falls at the same time as my regular board position.
Oh, okay.
So when that's up, it's up, because then it runs with that cycle. So.
Just wondered, I didn't see it on the list, so then I started to question how it went. But thank you for the clarification.
Yep. Yep. Roll call vote, Becky, would you like, would you vote? Like vote?
Aye.
Cass?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Some passes. Uh, the selection of, and designations of the board meeting dates and times. In the past, they've been on the third Monday night of each month. That has the least amount of conflicts with school activities. And a few holidays do fall on them, so we've chosen different Mondays. The board meeting calendar has to be agreed to go with the school calendar as we try to avoid break times, Easter, Christmas, and other holidays. So does that work for everybody?
So we have that mark on the school calendar now, right?
Yes.
Yes. I should have.
What if I make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to exclude the school calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Cass, feature to it. Now, any discussion on the school calendar, uh, board meeting calendar?
Are we keeping the time at six? Six o'clock?
That was what we presented, but you guys can truly change it.
Six.
Works for me.
Do I?
Doesn't matter.
For you working people, my, you know, you guys. I can make it work around my schedule.
He wrote it in.
Oh, sorry. Didn't mean to come up that way.
Six works for me.
Okay, six, I'm, I'm finding the, and you've done.
It's been consistent, so.
Then let's do a roll call vote, Becky?
Aye.
Cass?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Uh, bank depositories, we need a motion to accept the bank. The proposed bank depositories, which.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is that handed out here?
That would be Unionity Bank.
Okay, any discussion? I'm sorry, Steve?
Unionity Bank.
That's the same bank as, it's been in the past. All right, roll call vote, Becky?
Aye.
Cass?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 I need a motion to authorize Superintendent Malmberg and the Business Manager, Nicholas Berry, to transfer funds electronically as needed for payroll purposes for CY twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's start with Randy this time.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay. I need a motion to, oh, sorry, I read the electronic transfers one and not the invest funds one. Same, authorizing Mr. Malmberg and Business Manager, Nicholas Berry, to transfer the funds electronically as needed for payroll purposes. The last one, I'm sorry, should have said invest school funds as needed for CY twenty-two. So we can re-vote on either, if you prefer, but so this, it would be the same.
We could vote on both, just to make sure.
Yes, that's.
Aye for both.
Aye for both.
Aye.
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 Becky?
Aye.
Okay. Um, we need a motion to designate Superintendent Malmberg as the identified official with authority for Pillager Public Schools to authorize user access to the Minnesota Department of Education's secure website.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. Brian, would you like to start the voting?
Aye.
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 Becky?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. School board compensation, presently, the board chair receives $2,700 per year, and the board members received $2,400. Board members also, the option of being paid $50 per meeting, for committee meetings and special meetings. I need a motion to continue with the current pay or with a change if you so desire. And the compensation history wasn't closed, so I need a motion for whichever of your little part desires on how you want to do that.
I make a motion that we accept it at the present rate.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. Okay.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Okay. Need a, some motion for the official newspaper of the school, which needs to be the Brain of Daily Dispatch. Uh, it's the only local newspaper that is published daily and covers all of the school district. We need a motion to accept the Brain of Dispatch as the official school newspaper.
I'll make that motion.
Is there?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Benny Lutz?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Beautiful. All right. Um, we need a motion to use the SOFT Roberts Rules of Order for conducting all board meetings.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? SOFT means we don't actually use them correctly. Just pointing that out in the class I took on the Roberts Rules is what that actually says. They called them Bobby's Rules, and they don't technically. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Okay, signature plates do not need to be changed, so we don't need a motion for that. All right. And I believe this ends the end of the reorganizational meeting. Now for the regular meeting. I need a motion to accept the, oh, sorry. If, are there any additions, relations, changes to the agenda?
Nope, not for me.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? And let's do a roll call, Cass?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
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 Okay, visitor comments? Come on. Thank, thank you, host. All right. Um, I need a motion to consider the consent agenda, including minutes of the December twentieth, twenty twenty-one school board meeting, cash flow, including investments, monthly bills paid, the monthly bills paid in the student activity accounts, donations from the Pillager Fire Department and Relief Association, $5,000 to our choir Chicago trip, that has now been canceled. Uh, Pillager Lions Club, $2,500 for the scoreboard. Coca-Cola Give, $55.40. Mid-Minnesota Credit Union, $500 to the kindergarten class. Also, including the personnel summary sheet that was included. Can I get a motion on that?
Some vote. I second.
Any discussion?
I had a couple questions. So is the high school musical directors, is that a shared position of two people now? Is it free love and Chad?
Correct, they're gonna split it fifty-fifty.
Well, that's nice, okay. And then my second question, with the Chicago trip being canceled, I just didn't know what the school had decided about that donation. Were they just gonna say, give it back, wait till we reschedule? Just curious.
Um, I don't know, I guess, well, I didn't know that they had that donation to them in specific. I'll have to talk, the last I heard, they were talking about doing something, they had talked about doing something local, but then they decided not to. So I'll have to decide what they're gonna, just put it in for next year? Uh, and I'll have to talk to Eric and Rob to see if they were gonna give it back, or just see if they had talked to see if they could keep it till next year's trip. I'll have to find out.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. I'll have to ask them and see what they were gonna do with it. I don't know the answer to that, Becky, but I could find out. I know a lot of the, the people, the kids and families, they had, some of them moved it to other trips, senior trips, things like that, or we allowed them to do that, but I don't know about that, that specific one, so. I'll find out for you.
Refunds are coming to those that paid out of their pocket, correct?
Uh, if they so choose, yeah, or moved it to other things. Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call vote, let's serve a cast.
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
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 Aye. The steps program presentation from Mr. Jason Zavage.
Where would you like to go?
Uh, somewhere where this camera here can spot you and Becky can see you, so somewhere in front of.
Perfect.
Middle me?
Perfect, perfect, maybe if I stand next to Mike, it'll look better. Probably, doesn't take much. All right. So, um, steps program, it's a program we started this year. It was a joint venture between Northern Pines Mental Health and our high school. Uh, Northern, the part Northern Pines does was supplied through a grant that Northern Pines got when her and I start, Julia Dobick and I started talking about this. Basically, it was the problems that we had, and a lot of it's, you know, some of it's related to COVID, and some of it was on its way before COVID ever happened. Uh, we've struggled with students passing classes. That the number of failures has increased, like every other high school in our area in the state. And the number of mental health, reported mental health issues amongst our students was increasing before COVID and has really exponentially sped up since then. So what we decided to do was do an in-house credit recovery program teamed with a proactive approach of mental health education for those students. So how it would work is if you're a student that's behind in credits, you would be assigned into that hour, and you would receive one full credit for going through the mental health education piece of it, which you would have two days a week, and then you'd have three days of outside work and journaling you'd do with that. And then you would work on the standards that you missed in any class that you had failed. So if Brian Grimsley had failed algebra, he wouldn't have to repeat the whole thing. He would only have to go back and get those standards that he did not pass. So maybe there's ten standards that students have to pass in, in algebra, Brian would only have to go back and complete the five that he did not pass, or the four he did not pass. And if he could actually show through a pre-test that he actually knew enough of that information, where we would consider it master, he could even test out of that. So it allowed students then to make up credits. So we had, well, thirty-eight students enrolled. We granted sixty-six credits as of last week. We had two more credits this week, so it's now up to sixty-eight credits. Kids earned in those classes. It has been very, very, for the first time out, very successful. I think Julia and Caitlin, Caitlin Young from Northern Pines really feel like right away, there was a lot of pushback from the students in working in group and working on some of the mental health stuff. I heard a lot of complaints right away, haven't heard a complaint since, since maybe the second week of, of the entire program. Seventy-four percent of those students who are largely some disenfranchised students who haven't done really well, would recommend this class to their classmates when we surveyed them. They had a lot of nice things to say about the mental health pieces of it, and learning about it, understanding those. So overall, this has been, you know, I couldn't have asked for a better start to this program. And it's really helped us in getting some kids back on track for graduation. And so a couple kids that were really, it was super important to them to get back on track to be able to participate in activities, because they weren't anymore, did get back on track that way, too. So that's what we were currently doing, we're gonna run that again second semester. And again, Zach Correllis and Gina Taylor are the two teachers. One does the regular ed, one does the special ed piece, piece of it primarily. And then our two Northern Pines professionals, Caitlin Young and Julia Dobick, have been instrumental, and again, that grant has really helped us out in that regard.
So this came to you from a grant, or we came up with the program idea?
We came up with a program, we got a grant to support the mental, the mental health side of it.
The mental health side, correct.
So instead of having to pay them, they have a grant that pays their, their part of it. But it was always kind of an idea of some of the people in the high school that we were, are we addressing all the issues here in the underlying, hey, I'm not gonna do any work for you? Okay? We sup, we support Zach and Gina's time. Oh, yeah, absolutely, that comes out of our pocket. Comes out of our pocket, or our time of their teaching time. So it's definitely a joint venture, and like I said, it's gone very well. And then, I'll Uh, and then, I'll kind of direct you to the second piece, my ascension piece. And, and I'll read a little bit off this letter and I don't feel bad about doing that because I have parents here that need to read this letter anyway. So, it's going to five people in this room, so. Um, we are very pleased to announce the opportunity for all of our high school students on Wednesday, February seventh, to be part of an inspirational story of Emma Benoit. Notice how I said Benoit and not Benoit, I'm very proud of myself for that, so, you know, congratulations.
Yeah, cause I'll be honest, I know a couple of Benoits, so I would pronounce it wrong.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, Benoit, yep, it's, uh, Pillager High School holds the screening of My Ascension. This is Emma's story of her battle with depression, anxiety, um, and ultimately led to her, uh, attempt of suicide at age sixteen. Uh, Emma's attempt obviously failed, um, left her paralyzed. Um, and she's on a mission to share her story and help others in, uh, find hope in the midst of darkness. Not only will students be able to be a part of Emma's story through film, but Emma herself will be here in Pillager, on campus as part of the panel discussion to take place after the film. We also plan, we also have curriculum and other activities, so it's be an ongoing, not just a one and done type activity. But this will kind of continue on throughout, cause sometimes I don't, I'm not a huge fan of the one and done piece. As a culture, um, I'm gonna skip down to third paragraph. We don't like to talk about suicide, for many talking about mental health is uncomfortable. However, research continues to show more and more that we can talk about suicide and bring it to light. We are able to help those who are struggling. Um, you know, one point two million people, um, attempt suicide every year and it is the second leading cause of death for those under twenty-five. Uh, My Ascension shines a light on the ongoing public health crisis by providing hope, information, and best practices. A big thank you to Smile for, Smiles for Jake, along with Kiuna Medical Center and CTC's support in bringing Emma's story to Pillager. Both Smiles for Jake representatives as well as mental health professionals from Kiuna Medical Center will be on campus to answer student questions after the film and be participating in panel discussion. Um, I will give every student the opportunity, the parents the opportunity to opt out. They don't have to be a part of that, I'll have a room where it's not shown at all, so they can go in there and just use it as a study hall. If, um, it's a sensitive topic where maybe the student is very mature, they don't want them watching it with all those other people, I'll have a couple of other small viewing rooms where it will be shown. Um, it is heavy, I have seen the, the, I did the sneak preview with the folks from Louisiana. Um, it is definitely, um, it's, it's heavy and it's very much, like I said, very moving. Um, any questions that you folks have regarding that?
And then.
Mr. Savage, what day did you say that will be on?
It'll be on February seventh. I think it's Monday, February seventh, it's Monday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, of course, yeah, pretty close to Monday though. Yeah.
Um. And then, um, after this, do we have adequate support for students whom, that kind of opens a wound and.
That's, yeah, Steve, thank you for saying that, we, that is something we wanted to make sure that we had covered, so. Um, the ladies from Northern Pines are very aware, they're gonna each have a room, our counselors will each have a room available for students that are, haven't, like you said, opens up a wound for them, opens up some emotions for them. Um, we are gonna try to make sure that that is covered. I even have Kiuna, the folks there and the folks from Smiles for Jake, said that they would stick around also and help in those rooms.
Is this something we've considered offering as a public thing in the evening, the same thing?
Sm, uh, there is a, uh, Smiles for Jakes is doing a community event at, uh, what's it, Woods, at the Woods? But they, I think they have to purchase tickets for that.
No, wow, that's.
But it is.
Preventative to a lot of, yeah, people.
Yeah, but, yeah, but it is, that's what they're doing for the community, but it's not through us here at that night.
That, that.
Yeah.
I, suicide was in my life twice this year from different members, so, um, I think it's a great thing to bring to the school. Thanks. Yeah, thank.
Yeah, thanks, uh, special thanks to Smiles for Jakes and CTC Center for bringing this opportunity for us. And I think we're the only, I think it's our school is the only one that there, maybe one other school in the area.
Yeah.
I think is where they're presenting it to you first and then to the community, but, so we're excited that they chose to bring it to us.
Thanks.
And, uh, just so you know, I'm not very proud of it, but, uh, this letter is now gonna be used by the, the, My Ascension then to go out to other schools so they can copy it and then send it out with theirs.
You wrote it so well.
Um, actually, uh, Sue said I didn't write it very well, so she corrected most of it and then, but she did put my name at the top, so it remains, you know, my word. So, thank you guys.
On the, Jason, on the credit recovery program.
Yeah.
Are you addressing the need fully or do you need more capacity?
You know, um, I think what, what, the plan was Steve was we're gonna see, see how went this here and on the halfway point, we sat and met with everybody, all the teachers and, and the mental health professionals. And, um, number one, we said, yeah, we'll continue with this. And then we wanna think of ways that we can bring this to more students. Um, and, you know, we, we, we've talked about the possibility of, um, and Mike and I have talked about it, um, having more of a, going back to a, uh, I always worry about freshmen coming into, coming into high school. We're gonna set some of those quarter classes that you've done in the past. Maybe that could be part of one of those quarter classes, really is that mental health piece and bringing in those professionals to talk through some of these. Cause mental health is, ed, education is something that has been pushed nationwide and like I said, it should be, um, you know, it's an epidemic right now. You know, to give people the tools and the, and the things that work is, is a great thing. So, um, I like to approach it from more of a, you know, uh, at the educational standpoint of it. But, yeah, we're definitely gonna look for ways to keep putting it in there.
Thank you. Perfect. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Then let's move on to special board reports and start with budgets. Becky, Brian, and Randy. We're, we're gonna let you present this time, Randy?
I have nothing. We didn't meet.
We did not meet.
We did not.
Answer, I like it. Okay.
We did not meet manager, but we do have the resolution every year at this time that you see there at number one.
So, is that something I need to read?
No, just that we, uh, direct administration to start looking at recommendations for programs.
I need a motion to, for directing the administration to make recommendations for programs and position reductions. This is an M S D A resolution that Pillager School Board uses every year so that the administration can do what it needs to be done to keep the districts open for the next school year.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, comments? Then let's roll call. Becky?
Aye.
Cass?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Beautiful. And business managers report.
Missy is home quarantined with, uh, family, uh, so she's not here today, but I can report a couple of things. Uh, we're in the process of second revision, so we will have a budget committee meeting here coming up first part of February. So we are gonna look at that and we also will have to do a, set early childhood fees, so we're working on that. And, um, I think that was about it, so not a whole lot else, but we, I know we do have a budget committee meeting coming up here first part of February. So we have second revision going on. So I think that's about it.
Okay, anything else from the budget committee? Nope, okay. Personnel, we met on January eleventh, not twenty twenty-three is that? I didn't even notice that, I told someone that our personnel committee thinks is twenty twenty-three. Um, we met and, um, first we talked about the superintendent evaluation, which Steve printed out the goals for the evening and I emailed it to Becky. So Steve, do you wanna start with talking about that?
I can, yeah, um, so the two goals are what we agreed to in, in our board meeting in December. Goal one, ensure that all students have individual learning plans in high school and adequate access to adult planning assistance, whether that is to college trade, military workforce. And then the evidence of performance, we set, uh, set three, um, performance goals. Cause every senior has an ILP and at least one follow-up meeting with counselor. And at least seventy-five percent of the juniors have met with a counselor and created an ILP. Um, evidence of performance number three is, uh, set up the freshman academy to start next year and, uh, to find out, um, what works and what doesn't work and how to apply for a job, uh, that sort of thing. So that's, uh, goal number one, any questions on that one? Should be what everybody understands, it's just those performance goals that have been added to it. Um, goal two is create and implement a teacher mentoring program in support of all teachers new Pillager school. Uh, evidence of performance one is, uh, creating confidential survey, compile results to determine what the needs are for the teachers. Number two is to meet with the teacher group to discuss results and define what the teachers' needs are. And then, uh, from that, create a job description for mentors, defining goals and responsibilities. And then the last one, which should say performance goal four, I'll make that correction. Uh, determine the interest of teachers to be mentors in each grade, uh, or subject matter. And then that sets us up to implement this in the fall, um, next year. And we may be adding, uh, superintendent standards onto that because, uh, Mike can't, can't do all of his work. Only as his role as a superintendent can he guide and, and make sure that things are happening and expeditions planning, but actual work will have to be done by others. So it's a matter of how does he do that all well in his, uh, position as. That's what that last part is. So this will be a part of the review in the spring. Questions, comment?
Anybody? Nope, okay, uh, then.
Mike, wait, Mike, you're comfortable with it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a good process and good meeting and clarified it really well and.
Yeah, we tried to work together.
Yeah, it went really well.
Yeah.
It was a good meeting to kind of clarify how we.
Yeah, cause we, we got in the weeds a couple of times.
Yeah, we got off track a few different times and sidetracked a few times and a little, little muddy, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, then we moved on to the custodial maintenance staff update, um, a discussion on possibly adding, uh, grounds and facilities person or, uh, because the grounds contract is due, but, um, we talked about that and decided on not pursuing that at this time. Uh, then we discussed the.
Wait, is that the same one for facilities?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I was gonna put that on our agenda.
We tabled it.
Yeah, we tabled it.
Yeah, we tabled that one after I did some more numbers and pin, pitched some numbers. I was gonna be on our agenda for our next one for that one.
Yeah.
Uh, just, it doesn't make sense with the numbers and current situation with budget with not knowing exactly where budgets are with the district office, I don't think it's the right time to do it.
Okay.
So.
So we're tabled for good or is it tabled or are we?
Tabled for now, and I, I did this FYI.
We were told not pursuing.
Okay.
Yeah, and just table, FYI, did inform Erica that to, for the budget or for his contract to go for two more years.
Okay.
So he knows that.
Perfect.
Okay. Uh, then we, um, had a discussion on busing contracts, um, including, uh, the charter school added, uh, bus routes type thing and added compensation. Um, we all thought they were entitled to something, uh, and needed to look at the contract and come up with a number and we very nicely pushed that off the budget committee on coming up with that number, because we didn't deal with the numbers on our side, you know the budget, so that's where we left that and you guys haven't meant, so.
Yeah, our question was, what does the existing contract say we need to do?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, do you guys have that contract or not?
No.
No.
Do we have a contract?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll bring it to the next budget committee, that's on our February agenda.
Okay.
And then, um, the busing contract is up for bid and we discussed, um, the hiring a consultant, which I believe we kind of tabled and wanted to look at cost and budget on whether that could be it was something we wanted to pursue for, further, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're in combination with the budget committee, so.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
We can't make those final decisions without budget.
Yes.
Saying, yeah, I'm gonna spend that money, so.
Okay.
My thought on that was, uh, getting a third-party person in to, it's, knows about busing contracts might be a good idea.
And mine was.
But, at what cost?
Yeah, at what cost?
Yeah.
And have we ever done it before?
No, no.
No.
Is there a reason why we're pushing to do it?
It's a good question.
Well, I, I can just explain, I just thought the contracts have gotten so complicated and mistakes we've made in the past with like mileage and things that I just don't know about all the time, so. A little bit more clarification on some of it.
And my, and I was very honest, my, uh, position was, I think that's, it was fine in-house, but that, I was willing to look at a consultant depending on cost and what was brought to the table. Any other questions on that? Uh, then we moved on to Schedule C and, uh, possible additions and proposals. And, um, adding some contracts to the Schedule C contracts for mentoring, um, junior varsity robotics and the fall play. Is there any others that we looked at? I think that was it.
No.
And not, no decisions made, just.
Yeah.
Just to clarify.
It was just if that needed to come. Uh, then we talked about essential, um, pay for, um, the Esser dollars. And did, we discussed the, uh, Paul Bunyan Education Co-op, which I believe it is possible action for tonight, correct, or is it?
Paul Bunyan is an action.
Okay. So what we discussed is, uh, we have, um, imp, we, we gave our licensed teachers, uh, essential pay check in December, I believe.
Because of all of the additional duties that happen to, so.
Yes. Yes. Uh, we also have people coming in from the, uh, Paul Bunyan Education Co-op, um, that do a lot of those things and have those duties. Brainerd decided in their contract, cause we share Paul Bunyan Co-op with other districts, including Brainerd. Brainerd decided in theirs that they would include the Paul Bunyan Education Co-op employees, licensed employees on that on their section, but they're only gonna pay their share, which is fair. Um, so then they kind of called for all the other schools to consider paying their share, which for Pillager would be about seven hundred, seventeen hundred dollars total across the board. That would cover everybody there. So, I would like to make a motion that we, um, pay that.
Is there anybody else that works for the school district that didn't get included or?
We have to have the second speaker.
I'll second.
Okay, now we. Is there any what?
Is there any like other groups that are, kind of work for the school just, you know what I mean?
Uh, to, to be honest, we discussed, there were other things that we discussed in that, um, and to be honest, I'm not sure how legally we pay that one, but we couldn't pay the others because this is a s, outside contract also.
Cause there's a lot of outside contracts, correct?
Except these are licensed.
These are licensed teachers and we have a contract with.
But it is an outside contract. Which is what we were told for the others, because it was brought up that we have a lot of additional employees that are not licensed teachers. But have taken on a lot of extra work, including kitchen staff, EAs, bus drivers, everybody. But according to a conversation with the lawyer, that wasn't, that was going to be an issue. But then this becomes an issue and I didn't.
This is a, this is a teaching contract though of Paul Bunyan. And we're not reopening up a, I'm just trying to outthink myself here. Is this not opening up outside?
It technically does open up an outside contract because we're giving them extra money.
Well, it would be comparable to a teaching contract, I would say. It's a two-year contract that we've already agreed upon with the union. So it would be like a union teacher and contract. So I would say if you did it to you, if we did it for our teachers, it would be comparable to their teachers. So I I could.
I can argue it both ways too.
Why?
I don't have any, obviously don't have any problem with it, but I also don't have a problem with the EAs and everybody else.
I guess that's what I see coming up. I guess that's what I see coming up out of it. I guess that's just me. I would say no kitchen aid staff is less than a teacher, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's not, that's not.
You start to like apples, apples. I mean, that's kind of like, I feel.
Yeah, I think we all found out.
I feel like you start to, yeah, you start to extend.
Everybody.
Yeah, I don't know. I feel like you're getting into murky water. I feel like that's a hard.
I mean, I, we could table it and I could ask the attorney if it's.
I don't know.
Yeah, we could table it and I could call Margaret. I asked her what she thinks.
That'd be like some hard.
When we discussed it, because Brainerd did it, we assumed it was legal.
Well, they're under Brainerd's contract though. Brainerd's, Paul Bunyan teachers are under Brainerd's contract.
Yes. So it's through their contract.
So it's fair for their to do, you know.
If it's a separate contract, it'd be like a side contract like we use for the EAs, because they gave their EAs.
Yeah, so.
The same bonus, but they're under their contract and ours.
But they didn't do the bus drivers.
No.
Because the Brainerd bus drivers aren't their employees.
Yes.
They're Reiner's employees.
Yes.
So they didn't pay Brainerd's bus drivers any bonus because it was opening up contract. So that would be similar to us doing Avions and.
And yeah, and I I wanna make sure I say, because I I would opt out of that vote because of my position.
Yeah. So.
But I I'm more worried, EAs did a lot, kitchen staff did a lot. I think bus drivers did a lot also.
So I could, we could, we could table it and I could wait and compare it to, I could ask Margaret and say. Is this similar to a third-party contract like the other ones? Cause I don't think there's any hurry. I mean, what's the difference?
I just, I think I would table it, I guess.
And then I could get Margaret's attorney, Margaret's, if Margaret says, yeah, it would be just like the other one, then I would say we shouldn't do it. I mean, I, that's a good point. I I didn't even think about it. I was thinking as a kind of teaching contract, but you're right.
Yep.
It could be very similar to a third-party contract.
And we're in a different role than Brainerd is.
Right, we are in a different role than Brainerd because it's it's Brainerd's, they're they're under Brainerd's teaching contract.
Yeah.
So why don't we table it?
I'm fine with voting on tabling it or rescind.
And then I could.
Well, we, you know, we have a motion to this.
Yeah.
So we can.
You can withdraw the motion or whatever. I guess you could do that.
Or withdraw the motion.
And wait for more information and I could put it on the agenda for next month.
Yes, I would withdraw the motion and wait for more information.
Paul, your second.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Then we also discussed another payment for our own licensed teacher employees. And that is a possible action if anybody would like to make that motion.
What was it?
To give our licensed teaching staff another bonus group here. Do we, are we on bonus essential pay?
Is that something everybody else is doing?
I'll make that, first of all, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I believe quite a few other schools have given a second check to their teachers. Some have not. Crosby, I believe, is one school that has not given any at all. There were a couple others, but most other schools have given at least one, if not two or three.
I think Brainerd is doing one now and then they're doing another one later.
Yes.
This is ultimately for extra duties due to COVID and other means.
Coverings, covering of substitute, covering losing prep, extra duties, things like that.
Yeah.
And that would really be the extra duties going forward from here to the end of the year.
Into the school year, oh, correct.
And about, if it's five hundred dollars, that's about fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
To the budget.
Yeah.
For the budget.
Is that coming off the budget or is it coming out of the?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Remember, who remembers?
Fifty thousand is what it costs the last time we did it.
Our original conversation back a few months ago was doing one in beginning of December and then another one later in the year was a conversation at one point. So.
Yes.
So this is why we just brought it back to say if we wanted to do something.
Any other discussion?
Did the, does the motion include the five hundred dollars or is it just say we want to do it?
Said we're gonna do it. I don't think we, I don't wanna figure it.
We didn't, there was no motion.
No, we did not talk about.
You didn't have the dollar amount on the motion.
So we really need a dollar.
Yes, we would need to amend the motion to include a dollar amount. But we needed a motion on a table.
To discuss.
Talk about it, yeah.
To come up with a number.
So I'll rescind my motion. I will make the motion for the extra five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And I second.
Okay, any discussion on that? No? Okay, then let's vote. Becky?
Aye.
Cass?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Can I make a suggestion on your motion? Do you have any preference on when you pay that? Can you add that to your motion? Payable on?
Again, payable and when's the next, when's the most convenient?
Well, let's let you make that decision.
Oh, it's.
Yeah, I'd say whenever it is most convenient.
Yes, whatever, yep.
All right.
Then we got an update on the search for the new head football coach. And at that point, interviews were coming, but I heard that's changed.
Yes, we did offer to a candidate on Friday. I believe we, he has accepted it. I will know more tomorrow. But as of today, I believe that candidate has accepted. I gotta work out some contracts today or tomorrow. And exactly duties, but I believe we have a tentative agreement. So I'll let you know more hopefully tomorrow.
And it was a unanimous decision by the committee?
Yes. Very excited.
It was all part of the committee that did the interview?
Uh, the administration, Matt, Wade, Jason.
Eric.
Eric Usman, Tatum Shee, and then Chad Cool. And then some of the kids were part of it on a second. Chad was, Chad and some students were part of it on a tour and it was kind of a second group that kind of were part of it, I guess you could say.
Couple of juniors to be, show them around.
Cool.
Perfect. Perfect.
Good. Then we discussed consideration for a resolution for the directing. On programs and reductions, which we gave you the ability to do. We talked about some non-renewals that may come up and some retirements that may be coming before us. But nothing's been confirmed and will, those will probably be before us in March. So we don't have to worry about them tonight. We just kind of glossed over them and discussed them. Then we got an update on policy four hundred and one, which then.
Went away.
The mask mandate that then went away. So the Supreme Court took care of that for us. And then we got, I actually, I'm gonna move, we we discussed the calendar, which I will do at the end because that will be a longer discussion, I think. We discussed Board Books. I believe the theory is that we're going to Board Books. The administration would like that. I have used Board Books. I, I'm fine with it. I don't extra use it by any means at Sourcewell. It does have a lot of features. Some may use it more than others. So it would come to all of us. It's just a different program to sign into on your computer. But I believe we discussed that we would still get a PDF of. The packet because unless like, the way I have to use Board Books for Sourcewell, if I don't sign in on my Sourcewell computer, I don't see it. And to be honest, the Sourcewell computer is not something I carry around with me all day. My phone is. So when I'm sitting waiting somewhere for a kid or a job or whatever, I read through those things on my phone, not my computer. So that's where Board Books for me is different, but you all may choose to love it. They do throw a spectacular common CS parties when they are at the National School Board Convention. I can tell you that, because I did go to that also. I spent most of my time, they invited us to the John F. Kennedy Museum. I spent three hours wandering around to the museum. It's lovely.
Explain more about the Board Books.
Yeah.
The Board Books is just a program that we will be able to use to keep minutes on, do packets on. Do, it sends agendas to people. It's it's just much easier for Elle and us. It's more of a tech program for doing board business. We would be able to give you guys a quick training on how to go in and get stuff for it. It does, it does do like, like she says, way more for a board if you wanted to. Like you can actually boat on it and do stuff that way, but you don't have to, you can take notes.
You can make notes, like you can pull it up, you can make notes on each agenda.
Yeah.
So that, yes, you don't have to write it down if you forget.
But but for us, it's just, yeah, but for us, it's more of a management system for us and doing it for us. And it sends agendas to newspapers while it's just an easier way of doing it. But for you guys, we would just use it for us to send things to you guys more so. But there would be some quick training if we wanted to show you guys how to go into it. Be a quick, maybe fifteen minutes or half hour before a board meeting, maybe. We would train you guys on how to get into it, use it, something like that.
Okay. Any other questions on Board Books? Okay, then we discussed.
I guess I have a question. Are, when are we going to that?
Elle's getting trained on here shortly, so probably in the next month or two. Probably next month. Might as well start doing it, you know, that way now while she's new and doing it, you know, instead of trying to learn new ways.
Right.
Anything else on that? We don't have to vote on getting Board Books.
No. No.
Yeah. Then we discussed the calendar options. Did everybody get that in their packet, the calendar option? Are we voting on that tonight or?
No, it's just FYI for you, because the the teachers group hasn't seen it, so.
Okay. So there were two options. My son did take a look at them the other day. Says he totally votes for the one that says we get out in May if we have to bother to come back after Memorial Day, which is dumb.
But he would know.
The line from the child.
He would know.
Yes. So.
What makes us push into June? Is it like a staff development day or?
No, it's just days off during the year.
Which some are staff development days.
Yeah, I feel like, I feel like each year just left.
Well, there's.
We added two, which puts us.
We actually added one.
I thought we added two.
And in your packets, did you actually have two? I only have one.
I want, I have the current one and I, I thought it was the current one and this one. I didn't think I had two.
Correct, that's what I got, the current one and only one for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school years.
I think there's only option one, I guess.
Only option number one.
Oh. Well, option number two is right there. Which would, option two.
Still brings you back.
Brings you back for two days after Memorial Day, which as far as I'm concerned, if you have to come back after Memorial Day, what difference does it make if you're doing two or three days? Most of that will be cleaning up your teacher's classroom anyways. Taking the random final, so. I was fine with both, but I was told I'd get blamed for either one, so it didn't matter.
Usually the teachers prefer getting out earlier. That's what the history has been, but we've given them options to have. Breaks during the year is kind of what you try to do.
Where do the breaks get longer? Did there was just like another day after?
Two days at President's Day weekend.
Okay. An extra day.
Two day at Easter instead of just Good Friday.
An extra day on the end of MEA, I believe, the Monday.
Cause there was a lot.
We had, that's the staff development day, yeah, it was the Monday of MEA.
I did not have Monday. Yes. Yes. Yeah.
But.
We're not voting on this tonight?
No.
No, it's, no, it's just.
Stuff to look at.
And then the teachers' union hasn't looked at it.
Okay, yeah, I'll set it to the teachers' union to vote on and usually they prefer to vote. They usually take the earlier out.
Yep.
That has been the history here.
Which would be option two, which.
Which is getting out before Memorial Day.
Okay. No.
No, it's still.
No, it's still after.
It's still two days after.
It's still two days after. It's May thirty-first. Still in May, not June, but it is after Memorial Day by two days. So. And after you have, like I said, if you have to come back after Memorial Day, what difference does it make? One or two days.
It's a little freak.
Yeah.
And then sometimes what happens too is when Labor Day is. How late Labor Day is, when when Christmas falls, those things all make, that's what affects Memorial Day and stuff like that.
Yep. So that, a future discussion. Did I miss anything, Steve?
No, you caught everything.
All right. That was our personnel meeting. Next curriculum.
Curriculum, I'll leave so many updates to Ryan, but. We, test results, we have some preliminary in, but a lot of work yet to do on them. Middle school reading and math really suffered compared to the state standard. And those were the ones that were revoked. Our elementary did pretty well in spite of COVID. Beat the state tram considerably.
It's because of rates.
Became in person all the time. So we would expect some of that. We, we were going to have a small engine class start this term, but. We were concerned about how the person we picked, how well they do students and that kind of thing. So we decided that we needed to take a different tact on that. And do that later. So we're still looking to have a small engine class at some point. We just need to find the right resource. And then.
Yeah, in your packet, you should have had a little bit of a summary with the education committee and what we went through. And so like Steve said, we started off, we did kind of dive further into the twenty-one data, so looking more at the grade level data. We had talked about doing, I think it was the December report meeting, we were gonna come back and go further into it. Put some trends in there in terms of some of the things, but by by no means are we done, kind of looking at that piece. In the next curriculum meeting, we will take focus and focus more on current year data. So where are we at right now? Hopefully in March, we'll have kind of a dashboard to show the board and how we're tracking and where we're at with current data. And then a couple of other things at the bottom part of the summary is that, and Jason mentioned it earlier. We're looking at a freshman course that we're looking to add, possibly another math course, or at least an alternative to Algebra II. And then some other proposals in terms of curriculum. That'll come as you guys start to go into the budgeting process.
Yeah.
Cassandra, did we miss anything?
I don't think so. It was a good meeting.
Yeah.
Good. Anything else from curriculum?
That's it.
Policy did not mean.
Facility did not mean, unless Mike's got something for the building project.
Uh, nothing building project update, other than we're still wrapping up a couple of bills, a couple of payments. And a couple of wrap-up items for the punch list still.
Still?
Still.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same word.
Yep, and then Facility Committee will be meeting. We got some decisions to make on baseball, softball.
Yep.
Now that Sarah is off the Facility Committee meeting, facilities, Cassandra will be on that. So we'll have to, I'd like to visit with you two after to see if we can't figure out a date to meet on that.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
I'll be honest, that's why I did not respond to that.
I figured that after I started thinking about that. Cause you weren't gonna be on it.
Setting up meeting, I may not be at.
So we'll visit on that, but other than that, that's it.
The heating unit in the CTC Center, did that get fixed yet or are we still in the workshop?
Wasn't aware of that one.
The heating unit, uh.
Heating unit, we've got.
It was under warranty, I, I don't know if it got fixed, but they were.
Yeah, I, I figure it's under warranty.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't know, I know Todd sent, sent me an email and said it was, they're ordering parts and I guess I don't know, I have to.
So we should still leave roll-up doors up?
Oh, well, I'll, I'll check. Last, I know he said, leave the doors open, parts have been ordered, I, I don't know any more than that.
Okay.
Off to check with him. I'm assuming it probably is fixed, but I haven't heard anything that it wasn't, so I know, I'll double check.
And then roll-up doors, is it a big deal? Have them up?
No.
Oh, it's security.
I just wanted to.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check with Todd.
Activities.
Security, no one can get in there.
Didn't mean.
You don't have to lock it.
We did not meet.
We didn't meet? I, I was unavailable.
Work schedules are high. Uh, and moving to other, the isolation quarantine policy update.
And chair and members of the board, I sent it in your packet, just a little update on, you know, the CDC came out with new guidelines and talking with some other schools, and also Jamie and I sat down with Ryan and just looked at, what does it mean? You know, can we do the five-day, ten-days, and after talking, Jamie's really, uh, got some concern with doing the five-day for students. So our recommendation, I hope if you had a chance to look through that, is to move to the quarantine for staff, is to move to the five-day for staff. Uh, students would stay at ten days. Um, and the reason being is if you can see the rationale there for, for staying at ten days is the key component of that is that you have to ensure that students mask up after, if they come back, and it's really hard to ensure that students are masking up when they come back, especially in the high school, middle school, it might be easier to do in the elementary. But if a kid came back, a student came back, day six through ten, they have to wear masks the full-time and are, is that student really gonna be masking up the full-time? And how do you ensure that they are? And then the district, um, and they could still be contagious on day six through ten. Uh, so that's a lot, that's a lot of challenges, district has not chosen to offer other testing strategies for even earlier return as they are not part of the CDC current guideline, so you have to do a test of that part process. And then tracking testing to return those causes significant challenges for school due to increasing cases in the community and time constraints for staff. So Jamie's recommendation, and we've had quite a few in the last week and a half, for most situations, you know, at first part, parents aren't very happy, but after Jamie explains that, they seem to, they get it. We've had one or two that have called me not happy, but, uh, for the most part, after we explain the reasons why they, they need to be out for ten days, they, they get it. So our recommendation is to go, stay with the five days or move it, move it to five days for staff. Reason for that is we can test the staff, they can test. Number two is we can make sure that they mask up. Um, so we're just asking for you guys to support that, or if you want to vote on it, great, you wouldn't necessarily need to vote on it, but if you get a phone call from a parent wondering why, we're recommending that, we want you to understand that and support us on that to, um, understand why.
Mike, I see what you're saying, but it is hard to know that staff can go back after five days and students can't when I feel a young adult, students especially, could keep their mask on.
There's a testing piece.
It's also frustrating to know, okay, well, I guess you can go to the free Tuesday night movie, or the five-dollar movie, and hey, you can go to Skeet Doll, and you can go to Target, and you just can't go to school. I'm not saying that the school can't make their own decision, but to me, that's frustrating that the CDC says one thing and our school district is saying another thing. And I kind of wonder, is every school district around us, I'd like you to tell us that, who, is everybody sticking with ten days? Staples, um, you know, Crosby, Brainerd, Pequot?
Yeah, as far as I know, uh, Crosby, Pequot, Brainerd, Pine River, I don't know about Staples, I did not get a response from him, but all the other schools in the public line are going five and ten.
They're going.
Staying ten days for students, yes.
They're changing it to ten.
Because of the masking and the testing, you can't get, you don't know, you can't, you don't know if the kid tested or not, and you can't track that.
So, so we're only requiring kids to be quarantined ten days with, not, not contact, but a positive test, right? Or is this if they.
Correct.
In contact or something.
And it's ten days from symptoms, so you could already, you could come back.
It could be six days.
Six or seven days.
Yeah.
Nobody has to be, they have got to have a positive test, right?
Yes.
No, I think that thing says, um, I feel like her handout might say, if you have a household member.
Yes.
And the kid lives in the household, even if they're negative, they still have to stay home. They have to remain home ten days from last exposure.
Right.
If they have a positive case at home.
If it's quarantined in a household, correct.
They could end up being home for a month at that rate. Yeah.
But they can go run around if anybody's doing a quarantine.
But they can go, yeah, they can go to the CDC.
And this is kind of the first time that we've decided to not follow the CDC, probably.
CDC gave options, so we are probably.
I, I'm curious, you, you can still be contagious at days six through ten, so why are the teachers here whether they've got a mask on or not?
Because they can test, and they've tested negative.
They have to test before they come back.
They have to test, and the kid.
Who's testing them?
They, they provide the negative test to Jamie. They provide the proof of the test, and we can't track that with.
No, you can't track that.
That's every corporation, that's everything.
I mean, I can see it with the positive test, but I struggle with an exposure that may or may not exist, or that someone, I mean, we all saw it last year, you were in a classroom with a kid that had, you didn't have a choice, you know, we had, we sent a lot of kids home that never got COVID. I mean, how many, what were our numbers last year for kids through trace contact, I think exposure at school actually getting COVID? That wasn't very high, was it?
Yeah.
If I remember correctly. I mean, so I would struggle with that unless it was, I wouldn't if it was a positive test. But if it was either negative or no symptoms, then I don't see the ten days so much. I understand your reasoning, I don't, but it seems a little much.
I thi- I think everybody's on board with this, if you've got a positive test, you stay home. I think we're, we're all struggling.
For ten days, otherwise.
It's the ten, the ten days that you have to be home if, just because you were in the same, in contact or household.
Correct.
And, and what are we, yeah, what do?
Yeah, because Levi's been exposed twelve times directly, he's never got it.
It's the people that get in trouble when they get home, mom got it.
Yes. Yes.
Dad got it, brother got it.
But the teachers, if they're positive, they can come back as long as they're wearing their mask on days six through ten.
Yeah.
And just now in my household, an asymptomatic kid at nine, day nine is when I get it. So the teacher is there still exposing those kids by wearing their mask on days six to ten.
They've had a test though, Becky.
Days.
They come back with a negative test.
Well, yes, it's, it's the paper here from Jamie says positive. You're saying if they get another antigen test and it's a negative on day six?
And a mask and they're good.
That's, that's what's being presented tonight, the way it's being presented tonight. Is they have to have a retest, an antigen test.
A negative.
At, a negative antigen test at day six to come back and have to be masked then.
If free, if they're free, remain free of symptoms and they test negative.
Okay, and then I think, well, that's probably unlikely. Back on day six.
It says right there, return on day six if remain free of symptoms slash test negative.
Which is gonna be weird for them all.
Right.
Yes.
And you gotta remember, I'm trying to staff a school.
No, I, we understand it.
No, I'm trying to staff a school, I can't run a school if I don't have staff. You know, like, and they say the masks help, right?
Yes.
You know, that's the difference with staff, if I have six staff out.
I agree.
I can't run a school. If six kids are home, they can still do distance learning, can still work from home, but I can't run a school if six staff are home sometimes.
But, but, but you said before, a staff will wear the masks.
Correct.
The, the worry that I have is the student that, okay, he'll have a mask, will he wear it correctly, or will she wear it correctly? So there's a problem there. Who are the mask police? And are you with them all the time, you know? You know, I guess that's the thing with that.
Well, then there's, well, then there's a.
You need a badge.
Yeah, right.
Well, and I think if we look even farther out, like you talk about Long Creek, you talk about Little Falls, you look at Bemidji, those schools, I think have either had to close or have been on the verge of closing because they have no staff. I think that's been the discussion in the last two weeks from what I've seen and heard, so.
I'm not saying that I don't support admin, I just wanted to discuss it.
No, I'm, I'm just.
It's a really hard question.
So the staff members, if I'm hearing everything correctly, the staff members is not an issue.
No, it's, well, the quarantine part of poor souls, that, the kid that got.
No.
Correct.
Well, I think the other piece of it too is that the Omicron is moving through, usually when a, and I'm not a scientist, I don't claim to be a scientist, but.
Are we done with that one?
When it goes through a family, it goes through a household, it goes through the household very quickly and it goes very, it's very contagious. That's a little bit different with the, than the Delta. Um, so it's, it's a little bit different, we're seeing it moving through a household very quickly. So there's a little bit more of a reason to quarantine a, a family.
I think if the locals are doing it, I guess I don't think that it's changing.
You're more, you guys are more health professionals than I am. I'm just telling you what my nurse is recommending based on what she does every day. You know, I'm here to support her. I know what her nightmare is to try to keep tests negative, you know, straighten up with tests and, um, you know.
I, yeah, personally, I'm fine with the teacher piece of that, that sounds reasonable, but I'd like to get the kids to school sooner with the negative test.
And every other school is leaving it that way.
Well, and I think the other piece of it, you know, ten days, they, that doesn't mean they're missing ten days of school either. Because sometimes it falls over weekends, you know, so.
But is it, to, from what you said, you're thinking, well, it could be less if they have a negative test.
That, in my mind, they, they're not even positive, they just have an exposure or a family member.
That's right.
If, if they have a positive test, I'm good with the ten days, but if they don't even have a positive test or they can produce a negative test, and they.
Yeah, and that'd be my thing too, if they can produce a negative test, if they got exposed, here's your negative test, I can still come back until I have symptoms.
And I think. Right, and I think the thing is, is like, this is where things get so gray is that I can tell you how many people have tested and had symptoms and tested and tested and tested every single day, and then it's the fifth day that they tested, but who does that, like, you know? But like, those are the rare things that you think you're gonna show up and then it doesn't show up until the fourth or fifth day of the swap. So I don't think you're gonna get a. Viruses don't work that way, it's not.
It, I mean, the instances. Has there been a rule through this whole thing that we all have?
Nothing's been settled.
So why did CDC change it? They went to five and five, right? So we're being more restrictive than what CDC protocol is?
I don't.
Yes.
If, yes, but they don't, you gotta remember, we're not your typical business. This, this is for, they, they don't make these rules for schools.
Okay.
They make this, you know, nothing's set for schools. You know, they don't think of, when they set the guidelines for five and, you know, five to this, they don't think of how this affects two thousand kids in a school.
That's not, this was a school-oriented.
No, this is set for just communities and.
Workforces.
Workforces.
Okay.
It's two thousand business, two thousand people in a business is different than two thousand kids in a school, you know?
I don't think anybody plans on, and I mean, we're gonna follow that, but I don't think anybody plans on nominating this or motioning for this.
I'd like to talk about it, but yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess.
I think it's, we can, we can.
I want to make the motion.
Becky, what are you thinking?
So it's gonna change.
I think that it doesn't need to be anything voted on, I think that's a policy that Jamie wrote, and I think it's fine if admin chooses to follow that. But I don't feel like we have to vote on it.
I don't think we need to vote on it.
No, but it's nice to know where we're at.
And I think if a parent calls you, you can, yeah, you know why and you can understand it.
Yeah, I. But. Yes.
I think I'd leave it as it is and it's gonna be continuous.
Well, you guys have always given us the flexibility and so you guys administer it and.
Yeah. Yes, yes. And that's kind of where I think we're still at.
Well, you guys have been, so I guess it's good for you guys to know why we did what we did and if somebody calls you and complains.
And they have a discussion about it, it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else on the COVID policy current update? Good, so let's move to the superintendent report.
All right, um, first thing I have is we had our first two students graduate from the CIS education course from Saint Cloud State that we offered through Sourcewell, Kiana Timmer and Jenna Waidula. Um, so we had two students, uh, solid peers and Brainerd had that as well. So, um, that kind of goes to show you how many, I guess you could say, students across our area are going into education. Uh, six students. So that's kind of a, uh, an eye-opener of where we might be down the road, so that, uh, but I'd like to congratulate Kiana and Jenna for that.
Awesome, good for them.
Um, also, um, we are currently working on a grant with CLC Trio for Upward Bound. We are partnering with Pequot, Crosby, and Pine River. The goal of that program is to do college and career readiness. Uh, they have advisors that actually come out and meet with students that may come from low income or disabled. The students that are usually first generation that have an academic need, that, uh, first generation that may be going to college or career or, um, uh, technical school, something like that. They meet with ninth graders and they stay, try, their goal is to try to get up to twenty students that enroll in the program, and they stay with those kids all the way through twelfth grade. So, uh, hopefully we get awarded that, uh, that grant, so we're excited about that to partner with CLC. Uh, we completed conferences last week, um, so got that completed.
I'll, I'll be honest, I enjoy, I, I gotta make a comment on that, I enjoy being back in the classrooms. I, I liked that they're all in one spot, but it is nice being in their classrooms, however, hiking all the way out to that wood shop.
Wasn't very fun.
It's cold out, January, it's down the time they have conferences and you have to go outside to do it.
Well, I think of the kids that have to go out every day.
Yeah, so, sorry.
I'd like to, uh, congratulate, uh, and thank Ben Horn and our adult volunteers who have got the youth wrestling program up and going, we, they, some of them completed in their first tournament.
Elle loved it.
A couple of weekends ago, they did very well for just having four practices. We have twenty-six registered participants in that program, so we're excited about that. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Kim Lund and the Unified Basketball Team on their performance against Minaga, it's a great event for both the teams and appreciate all of her efforts and the work that she does to put on that event with those students. Daddy Daughter Dance, uh, we got that scheduled, uh, back again, uh, that'll be at the CTC Center Saturday, February nineteenth from six-thirty to eight-thirty.
How do you dance in the CTC Center?
It's on the stage. So we'll have, um, music and, uh, setup, uh, we have a plan for that, so we have music. Then they're gonna have like a grand march where they get the, the dad and the daughter getting introduced and stuff, so.
Cool.
Um, a little bit of a different venue, I guess, we're gonna try to have it in there. Um, Snow Week is scheduled for February seventh through eleventh. Uh, January twenty-fourth through thirtieth, which is this week, is Paraprofessional Recognition Week, so I'd like to thank them for all their work. District newsletter should be coming out, uh, around February first, so watch for that in your mailboxes. And last couple items, uh, Ed Foundation is planning their dinner again this year with conjunction with the Full Start Program, along with the High School Musical on Saturday, April ninth. Tickets will be on sale for that soon, and then also the Pillager Booster Club is hosting their tree tonight on Saturday, February twenty-sixth at the Community Center. Believe that's at six PM, and I think tickets are on sale already, so you can look at their, at their website, or I think, and we also have a link on our school website for both those events as well, so. That's all I got.
Any other individual board member report? And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Becky.
Wow, it's all roll calls tonight, huh?
It is.
I say hi.
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 Meeting adjourned.
That's because of you, Becky.
Yeah, I figured, I was trying.
Yeah.
We blame you.
That book that's. That bugger's probably hanging out your nose, it looks good.
Yeah.
Zach. Too bad.
Thank you.
I would make your second guess, man. Well, I'm getting.
No, true.
Sorry, you can eat your food down there.
I, I would request that, but email us, could that be printed out for me at the meeting, so I can have the, uh, actions. No, cause that one doesn't have an action item, the one that was emailed like that.